Okay, at this time, I'll call us to order and we'll ask the clerk to call the role of the board to establish the quorum, please.
Commissioner Blakemore?
Present.
Commissioner Askew?
Here.
Chairman Whitfield?
Here.
Commissioner Hart?
Here.
Commissioner Stoltz?
Thank you, all members are present. We do have the approval of our agenda tonight. Is there any modifications from the board to the agenda tonight?
No, sir.
Hearing none, we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion of the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved as presented. We do have the minutes from our prior meeting back here on March the 14th, 2024, at 6:30. Those minutes are in the packet. There's also packets back there on the table. The packet's also on our website. Is there any modifications, changes, or corrections to the minutes tonight from the board?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blakemore to approve the minutes as presented. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as presented. here with us before, we have these zoning items that come up. We go through all of these in a public hearing. We'll ask anyone that wants to speak in opposition of anything that comes up on the agenda, that you come up and state your name for the record and will allow you to speak. And then we'll ask for those that are, that want to see this pass, or the applicant that wants to come forward and speak. You don't have to, but you're welcome to come and speak. And once we go through all of these, we'll have our public comments, and then you'll see there under new business, these items come up again, and that's when our planning director will come up and speak to the board, and the board will make the decisions on these action items. So tonight, our first public hearing is for William and Anna Carpenter, request a rezone from A1 agricultural zone to R1 residential for property located at 430 Old Lafette Road, Chickamauga, Georgia, 30707, tax map impartial number 0-316-009C. Is there anyone here tonight that's in opposition of this rezone request? Any opposition? Okay, hearing or seeing none, if anyone wants to speak in favor of this, or if the applicant would like to, you have the option to come up and speak at this time if you desire. Okay, hearing none, we'll move to our next public hearing item. Kenneth and Judy Lawson request a rezone from A1 agriculture to R1 residential for property located at 88 Glass Mill Road, Chickamauga, Georgia, 30707, tax map impartial number 0-316-009D. Any opposition to this request? Hearing none, anyone that would like to speak in favor of this, or if the applicant would like to come and speak, their option is available at this time. Okay, no one coming forward, we'll go to the next one. I hope I don't butcher this too bad, but where is it? RISO, R.I.?
Rios.
Oh, Rios, thank you. Rios Renovation LLC requests a rezone, A1 agricultural to R1 residential for property located at 454 Old Lafette Road, Chickamauga, Georgia, 30707, tax map impartial number Any opposition to this one? No opposition, anyone that'd like to speak in favor, or the applicant would like to speak? Hearing none, we'll move forward. Next one is Kim Champion, request a rezone from R2 residential to A1 agriculture for property located at 1640 Highway 95, Rock Springs, Georgia, 30739, tax map impartial number 0-337-008. Any opposition to this one? Hearing no opposition, would the applicant like to speak, or anyone that'd like to speak in favor of this?
I'm here.
Yeah, please come to the podium if you would. People at home have a hard time hearing.
Oh, sorry.
So please just state your name for the record.
Kim Champion.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, it was for the sale, which I think we closed in October this past year, but they had subdivided it for residential, and I'm just keeping it farmland, not building or anything. I have horses and dogs, and that's my, horses are my main interest.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you so much. Anyone else like to speak on this one, from an R2 to A1 agriculture? Hearing none, we'll go to the next one. Cody Jeffcoat requests a rezone from C1 commercial to R2 residential for property located at 3464 North Highway 27, Lafette, Georgia, 30728, tax map impartial number 0-322-4-001. Any opposition on this one? Hearing none, would the applicant or anyone in favor like to speak to this one? Okay, anyone like to speak? Not at this time? Okay, thank you. All right, next one is Lori and Camilla Carter, request a rezone from R2 residential to RA, which is residential agricultural, for property located at 348 Middle Road, Lookout Mountain, Georgia, 30750, tax map impartial number 0-011-055. Any opposition to this one on Lookout Mountain? Any opposition? Hearing none, would the applicant like to speak at this time, or anyone? Yes, y'all could come forward. Once you get to the podium, just please state your names so everyone at home can hear you on the record.
Hi, I'm Camilla Carter.
And I'm Lori Carter.
And we actually have something for, if you will, take one and pass it down.
Okay.
And this just really shows the property in question, and if you look at the second page, we have some questions and answers that should cover everything. And then there's also some pictures, who we are is on the third page. We have a picture of the intersection, and then some businesses in the neighborhood, and then really just what the neighborhood looks like.
So, as far as we can tell, the main reason that we're here is that we had desired to be in compliance with Walker County's business license requirement, and so when we went to obtain that, we found out that because we are a farm and have a farm number, but we don't have five acres, that we kind of were in a zoning glitch, and so that's our main reason for wanting to change the zoning, so that we can be in compliance and so that we can obtain our business license and be in good graces.
Good, yes, okay. Any board members have any questions?
I like your business plan.
Yeah, very good.
Thank you.
Very well put together.
Thank you.
Any questions? All right.
Okay.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Eugene Hester, request a variance on the number of required parking spaces for a New Dollar General store for property located at 126 Black Circle Spur, Lafette, Georgia, 30728, tax map impartial number 0-329-1-021A. Any opposition to this request? Hearing none, would the applicant or anyone in favor of this like to speak at this time? It's your option. Okay, hearing none, we'll move forward. Okay, next we have Larry Bang, request a variance for a 30-foot building setback from the road for property located at 0 Bridal Lane, Lafette, Georgia, 30728, tax map impartial number 0-490-1-017. Any opposition to this request for setback? Would the applicant like to speak at this time? Hearing none, we'll move forward. Okay, next we have Larry Bang, request a variance for a 30-foot building setback from the road for property located at 0 Bridal Lane, Lafette, Georgia, 30728, tax map impartial number 0-490-1-017. Any opposition to this request for setback? Would the applicant like to speak at this time? Hearing none, we'll move forward. Okay, at this time, that will close out our public hearing, we'll move into the other parts of our agenda. At this time, we have our public comments, if anyone would like to come forward and address the board. We'll give you up to five minutes to speak. Does anyone like to come forward tonight? Yes, ma'am, please come forward. Please state your name.
Hello, I'm Laura Alsley, and I have most questions surrounding the audit, but first I wanted to start with Mr. Whitfield, you're a board member of the Walker County Water and Sewer Authority. You're ACCG Board Member Manager for District One, representing 15 counties in Northwest Georgia, on an executive committee for ACCG, and a board member and CEO of the Walker County Development Authority, and Chairman of the Walker County Board of Commissioners. Are there any other boards or committees that you're a part of?
Yes, as the Chairman of the County Commission, one of the state requirements is that I serve as the Vice Chair of the Walker County Board of Health.
Okay.
And so that's, all 159 counties are that way.
Okay.
See if you missed anything. I think that, I think you've covered everything.
Okay, great. Well, most of these entities are completely separate from the county, but just considering all of your involvement with all the outside entities, are you able, as a full-time Commissioner of Walker County, to fulfill the duties with our county without interference of these entities overlapping the county's top?
Yes.
Okay.
Because those are not everyday functions, or any of those.
Okay, so why is it that we are having, in the audit, it did mention some compliance notes that the auditor had made, and that are reoccurring from previous years? Even, I went back to 2021 and saw some reoccurring issues.
Some of those are compliance issues from departments that we cannot control, being other elected offices.
Okay, so you have mentioned you're the CEO of our county.
Yes.
But you do not reach out and try to orchestrate for these different departments to be compliant?
We have, and we've made some progress there.
I was just wondering with all of your involvement, you know, if you were able to have the time to make sure that we're compliant and not having reoccurring issues. So, I'll just move on to the next part. In this audit, it also mentions that Walker County provides substantially all funding for the Development Authority, and is also responsible for paying the authority's debt. Since the county pays for the debt and substantially all funding, does the Development Authority discuss and consider the Board of Commissioners' thoughts? And any one of you all are welcome to answer.
Well, let me cover the part that talks about the county covers that debt.
Okay.
Back in 2015, 2016, when the previous, when the previous administration bonded out $15 million for the industrial.
So, but we'll go on over additional debt that it does mention, but I know what you're talking about, and I'll mention that as well.
Okay, but there's a lot of people here that probably don't.
Okay.
So you say that the county covers the debt, so what the Development Authority did in the previous administration, before I ever got involved, is they levied a millage increase to cover that bond.
Right.
And so when you read that bond document, it says the county is responsible to collect that and remit that on an annual basis, and so therefore that's why the auditor said, but the people at home may not know that.
That's right, so why don't, why don't you?
So the Development Authority and the county have to work in concert together to make sure that obligation is fulfilled.
It says the county provides substantially all funding, though. I'm not talking about one specific bond. Do you all talk about these debts that it's saying that we, that the authority is covering? Do y'all talk about that? Because if we're having to pay for that, is it something that the rest of the Commissioners are talking with the authority about?
There's, there's nothing.
I want to speak to that, just to answer your question. No, I mean, I personally haven't, I don't know about the other guy.
I personally haven't.
But.
How about you, Brian? Have you?
I have talked to, I got involved in some when they bought the property on Glass Mill Road.
Glass, Glass Road?
Glass Road. Because I didn't understand how that works, and I did go to a meeting, and I've talked to some of them about that, but not about specifics about the debt.
Okay, so no, not really?
No, no.
Okay, so my concern there, though, is that, I mean, if we're paying for the debt, we should be able to communicate with the authority.
The only debt that the county pays is what was levied in that document when they issued the bond.
Which were at 10 million at this point.
It's about 11 million.
Okay, and in the, in the audit, it says around 10, I guess it was being paid down.
There's part of that in the current liability, and there's part of that in the long-term liability, you've got to add those two together.
Yes, exactly.
So it's actually 10,775,000 dollars.
Exactly, perfect, that's exactly true.
So, that is the only cost that the county incurs for the Development Authority.
So.
The Development Authority has its own funding sources and its own capital that it works with.
Question, just a question, Detective Spur, I just want to understand. So, there's no way that we, as the county government, could be tied to, what it sounds to me like, if it says that we're responsible for, I want to understand. So are we, or are we not, or could we be, or could we not be responsible for Development Authority debt as the county?
The only debt, the only debt the county can be responsible for is what they signed up for, and that was the collaboration of leveraging the millage to pay that bond debt, and that's the only.
So the auditor's report's incorrect?
No, I don't think it's incorrect.
Because it says substantially all funding for the Development Authority, and also responsible for paying the authority's debt. That's what it says.
Okay.
I'm going to move on to the resolution.
Okay, I'm sorry, but your time is, is out at this time.
Of course it is, but let me mention on, but what you had talked about with regards to that debt, the specific one, it does say in the resolution that you signed, that the county may levy and collect an annual tax and provide financial assistance to the authority, and that the tax for such purpose shall exceed or may not exceed 1 mil per dollar upon assessed value of the taxable property in the county. And what I'm going to tell you is.
That levy in that resolution was signed by BB Haskins.
No, it was signed by you, I've got it right here, it was in 2019.
Let me see, let me see, well, that was on the refinancing of the debt.
That was the refinancing, but this language came from the refinancing.
And that refinancing saved these taxpayers 4.9 million dollars.
I don't have a problem with the refinancing.
Okay, your time is up.
What I have a problem with is the fact that this language allows for you, whether you intend on increasing taxes or not, this language was put in there, and we can pay, y'all can levy a tax on.
Not based off that one comment in the audit report, no.
That's not in the audit report, it's in resolution R01319, adopted on June 13, 2019, signed by you.
And it's, let me, let me look at that.
Actually, you can look at it online.
Okay, well then your time is up. If you don't want to share it, your time is up.
Oh, sure, actually, I think.
All right, who else would like to be next?
Hold on a minute.
Let me, let me go ahead and show that.
I want to say it, I want to say it.
I do have that paper right here.
I'm not going to do that crap. Let me see.
I've got, actually, I have that paper for all of you.
I just, I just want to understand it, but the question's been right before, we're going to fin, we're going to finish understanding this, it's not a conversation, it's, I want to understand what we're doing.
So this comes from that resolution there, you can pass that page. I only printed one page, because I didn't want to run it.
Just trying to understand.
So, yeah, so this, what this says, for those at home and those that are not, that are sitting here, this talks about, the original agreement was done September 1st of 2015, and it was for 15,230,000 dollars for a Series 2015 bond.
Which I don't have a problem with.
And then it talks about how they leveraged the Rock Springs Industrial Park, the Walker County Industrial Park, the Ohio Logistics Project, and also the industrial, well, the Civic Center, the Ag Center, also Mountain Cove Farms, Dodory Gap Property, Mountain Cove Farms Resorts, talks again about the Industrial Park, Ohio Logistics, the Civic Center, all of that was used as collateral to leverage. So in 2019, the action that I took as sole commissioner was to refinance that bond when we finally got a credit rating above junk status. We were able to get an A1 credit rating, we took five years off the debt, and 4.9 million dollars of interest off of the debt to refinance this bond, and so that's what this was about.
Oh, I know what it's about.
But the people sitting here don't.
So I just said that? So basically, what I had an issue with was this language here.
That's why.
The whole point of bringing this up is the fact that you all, what I have a problem with is you have the ability, according to this document, because it's in here, to levy and collect an annual tax to provide financial assistance to the authority. And that's why, all I wanted to do is make a comment, that that's exactly why these county Commissioners for each of our districts are important in some of these decisions, because, you know, whether you do increase the tax or not, this gives you all the ability to do that. And I do not want that, and I know the taxpayers have said that as well, and I just feel like that these district Commissioners, and it sounds like the only one that has been a part of one meeting briefly, and not in great detail, is Brian. So I think that it would be very wise and helpful for all of the district Commissioners to be a part of some of these decisions that can impact us as citizens.
In the section you're referring to here for everybody, it says, "Whereas in accordance with the Official Code of Georgia, annotated Section 48-5-220-20, the county may levy and collect an annual tax to provide financial assistance to the authority for the purpose of development, trade, commerce, industry, and employment opportunities provided, however that the tax for such proposed shall not exceed 1 mil per dollar upon the assessed value of taxable properties in the county."
But that very language allows for it to be a possibility.
It does, but this board would have to vote to make that happen.
Right, and what I am saying is, that's why it's important for them to be a part of some of these decisions with the Development Authority.
They would have to be 100% a part of that decision.
100% a part of.
Of the decision to, because they would have to levy, this board would have to levy that tax.
No, 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 I'm talking about in general, any of these, these, the debt issuers, they should be a part of.
There's not any debt being issued.
I think what the point is, what I'm understanding is that there could be, and I'm very familiar with verbiage, and when it says "may levy," that means we can, that tells you right there that you can. Why would we not, or why would it not have been at the time when this bond was renewed, and like I said, you cut the time off of it, I understand that, why would we not have taken, why would that verbiage need to stay there? I mean, why, why is it there? Because it, because it implies to me, and I'm just, I want to make sure, but it implies that if they did incur a bunch of debt, that we have the authority to raise taxes to pay for that.
Exactly.
It's kind of what it sounds like, and I just want to, if that be the case, if that be the case, then, then you're exactly right, the board needs to be involved in every decision that is made, if that be the case, because we're the ones that ultimately would have to be making the decision to pay the bills that someone else had incurred.
Exactly.
Now, I'm not, I'm not saying that's what, you know, I'm just, in my understanding, though, if they have that, if the ability's there to create a debt, and then we have the ability to raise a tax to pay for it, then I think that common sense would tell me that we would need to be involved to some degree. Now, so how does that work?
Well, I don't know what all Section 48-5-220 states, but I'm sure the Georgia state law outlines how that function would be.
Yeah, we'll find out.
So we would have to read that section to know more of the details.
And that is exactly why I brought up the, where the auditor put in here, that Walker County provides substantially all funding for the Development Authority, and it is also responsible for paying the authority's debt. So either that's incorrect, and this audit needs to be modified, which you said it wasn't incorrect.
I don't think it is, but I will check with the auditors and see.
That'd be page 35.
Okay, thank you.
See you next time.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir, please come up, and just please state your name for the record, if you would, please.
I have a question, so, no, I'm trying to be offensive.
Sure.
My name's Leonard Johnson, I live in Chickamauga, just outside the city. I'm trying to build a house on some land that I'm, and I've gone to apply for the perm yet, or, well, I spoke to the people that build a permit place, and they say I can't use lumber that I have sawed myself. Yeah, I built one five or six years ago, Mark, you come and inspect it, and then no problem.
It's an allowable practice, it's an allowable practice. John, you want to come up and speak about it? Because it is an allowable practice for alternative materials.
Yeah, John's, John's our planning director, and he's going to speak to your question.
Yeah, he's handling that now, but, but I want to see, get his interpretation as well, please, sir. If you don't mind.
So, we're governed by the IRC 2018 edition, is what we're currently on.
Well, for me.
So sawed lumber has to be approved from an approved agency, saying that it's properly dried, for structural lumber.
What you're saying is a catch 22. I talked to one of the inspectors, and they said it has to be approved by a licensed, accredited inspector.
That's how code, that's how code reads.
Hear me out, I asked him if he knew one, how to get ahold of him, he said, "No, but you can find it on the internet." Looked on the internet, there's one in the United States, and it has an address, it's Pacific something, it's way out, out west.
It's a common practice, and I know there's multiple in the, in the area within probably 100 miles that do, that does that work, that certifies and qualifies lumber for grading, for structural lumber. You can use sawed lumber for non-structural members, but you have to have sawed lumber approved to use it as a structural member, and that's how our code reads, and that's what we're governed under. It is a usable practice, and it's fairly common, but for structural lumber, Chapter 6 of the IRC 2018 edition, 602, references everything you'll need to know about lumber a, it's a uniform code that kind of gives you the guidelines for residential living or commercial buildings or things like that. So that's where that comes from. It's the same standard for everybody. If you buy a permit in the county, it's the same standard for the material.
It'd be no different than asking or requiring you before you get a CO certification for occupancy to have smoke detectors. It's the same difference, life safety and structural. We have seismic, we're in seismic category C, and you have, we have wind shear you have to meet. We have snow, roof snow load, ground snow load, things that are required anytime you're constructing, any vertical construction, that you must meet to ensure safety. But I'll be more than willing to work with you, guide you in the right direction, do whatever we can to work with what you have. Find you someone, whatever we can do to accommodate you, I'll be more than willing to do.
How could I get ahold of you?
I'll be, I'll give you a car before we leave. I'll get one out of my truck. I have your number at the office. So I'll get in touch with you and we'll get it squared away.
I appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else like to speak?
Wait a minute. One more. This code thing he's talking about, I heard they're getting variance. Is there any way to get a variance for that?
Not on the structural member, on the structural members of the building itself, the structural members. And if you notice, that's what John was referring to. If you were using it just for cladding, you know, like for siding, things like that, they're non-structural, that's a different category as well. What his concern is, as a building official, and I understand it because I've done it for many years, is exactly what he said. Our topography up here, our CARs topography, which the ground moves. You know that. You've been here a lot. So, and you're building it for, you know, whether you're living in it or you're selling it, or one of these days, people say, "Well, I'm building it for myself." Well, you are right up until the day that you pass, and then someone else will be moving into it. So we just want to ensure that for your safety and for anybody else's safety, and that's what he's trying to do, is just make sure that we, if that stuff's been sawed for two years, and it shouldn't be any trouble to get it to grade out all right to build with. I can, I run a sawmill myself, so I can assure you that. But we just go the steps that need to be gone through, and John will be glad to help you with it.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else like to speak? Okay, we'll move forward with our agenda. Now, under our new business, this is where the board will take up the order of the rezone request. So the first one we had was William and Anna Carpenter requests a rezone from A1 Agricultural Zone to R1 Residential for property located at 430 Old Laffette Road, Chickamauga, Georgia, 30707, tax map impartial number 0-316-009C. What is the board's pleasure on this one, or would you like to hear from our director?
Well, I think, well, at the meeting, John, did they not group the first three together because they're all in conjunction with the same property? I think Mark's familiar with it.
Yeah, I'll speak on that, Brian. You're exactly right. I have a piece of property that's adjacent, kind of catty corner from there. And if they didn't address them all three, we certainly can here now.
They did.
Okay. And so we'll do the same, okay? Since they did, we'll do the same. So those three, those three properties, the Anna Carpenter property, Kenneth and Judy Lawson, and the Rios renovations, just as a quick, just so everybody understands, they were zoned residential, and when that came in, I don't know, no, Rebecca, it was all a part of, it was all agricultural. And what's happened is we've had some, a case there that lasted for quite some time, many, many years. Ended up being a very bad hoarding situation, had just a lot of issues. This is not farmland anymore. It never will be. And these rezones are actually to probably prevent the type of situation that happened before, where zoning was the only thing that allowed them to have what they had there in a neighborhood. So these three, I'm very familiar with. I'm very familiar, the county's very familiar with. It's been a lot of money, a lot of time spent on this problem, I say. And so I'd like to make a motion that all three of these are collectively approved as per the planning commission.
Second.
Okay, so the motion is for the William and Anna Carpenter request, the Kenneth and Judy Lawson request, and the Rios, sorry about that, Rios renovation. Is the motion on the floor made by Commissioner Askew, seconded by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, those are all approved as submitted. And I'll sign those at the end of the meeting so we can move forward. Okay, the next one we have is Kim Champion requests for rezone from R2 Residential to A1 Agriculture for property located at 1640 Highway 95, Rock Springs, Georgia, 30739, tax map impartial 0-337-008. This was recommended by the planning commission. It's approved, to approve as submitted. What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Sir.
We have a second by Commissioner Blake Moore. Any further discussion of the board?
Yes, sir. One thing to add. So it was brought up in that meeting. There was a concern because it was going to ag property and it's surrounding a residential property, about poultry houses going there. But Chrissy did confirm before the meeting, because of the setbacks that would apply, there's not enough room for that. So she wanted to make sure that was mentioned at that meeting in order to mention it here too as well.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that one is approved. Next one we have is Cody Jeffcoat requests a rezone from C1 Commercial to R2 Residential for property located at 3464 North Highway 27, Laffette, Georgia, 30728, tax map impartial number 0-322-4-001. This one also was heard at the planning commission on March 21, 2024, and the recommendation was to approve as submitted. What's the board's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Blake Moore. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that one is also approved. The next one is Lori and Camilla Carter requests a rezone from R2 Residential to RA Residential Agricultural for property located at 348 Middle Road, Lookout Mountain, Georgia, 30750, tax map impartial number 0-011-055. This was also heard at the planning commission on March 21, 2024. The planning commission's recommendation was to approve as submitted. What is the board's pleasure on this one?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that one is approved. Next one we have is Eugene Hester requests a variance on the number of required parking spaces for a New Dollar General store for property located at 126 Black Circle Spur, Laffette, Georgia, 30728, tax map impartial number 0-329-1-021A. This one also was heard on March 21, 2024. At the planning commission, their recommendation was to approve as submitted. What is the board's pleasure on this request?
Make a motion to approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Askew. Do we have a second?
Sir.
We have a second by Commissioner Blake Moore. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. The next one we have is Larry Bank requests a variance for a 30-foot building setback from the road for property located at 0 Broadall Lane, Laffette, Georgia, 30728, tax map impartial number 0-490-1-017. This was heard by the planning commission on March 21, 2024. Their recommendation to this board was to approve as submitted. What is the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Sir.
Second by Commissioner Blake Moore. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is approved as well. All right, at this time we do have our commissioner comments. We'll start with Commissioner Blake Moore, District One, sir.
Just appreciate everybody coming out, getting involved, helping us better make decisions. Appreciate all of our department heads and our employees, first responders, if I can help, call it text or email.
Mr. Haskins?
Oh, same thing. No, I appreciate, we do, when we sit here and have a crowd and we have people that are passionate about what's going on and get up and speak their piece and get their thoughts, it does. It's just better, it's better for everybody. It helps us. So I appreciate the participation and want to thank y'all for showing up and keep coming.
Mr. Hart?
Last Saturday, we got to help the, as the chairman, I went down and helped the animal shelter do the spade neuter clinic here in Laffette. It was a great program. They did 157 animals were chipped. So that was a great thing. It was done for free. And they also got 38 animals committed to spade neuter, and they gave away a lot of cat food. So that's something they're going to try to do throughout the county, not just here in Laffette. They mentioned doing one maybe in the Rossville area, which I know is needed. I think Robert may be working with them on that. They're going to do one over in the Billinow area too. So that was a great event. Tomorrow is Walker County Ag Day at our Ag Center. So I hope everybody gets a chance to come by and see that. There's a lot of people involved with that, the Walker County Young Farmers, Walker County Farm Bureau, and all the ag educators in the county are putting that on. It's really a great event. If you've never been, I encourage you to come by. It runs from 9 till...
8:30 to 1:30.
8:30 to 1:30, Brian. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate everybody coming out tonight. I want to thank all of our employees for the hard work that they do and the wonderful job that they do. Want to wish everyone a very happy Easter. And want to let you know there will be a sunrise service at the Cedar Grove Community Center Sunday morning at 7:00 a.m., breakfast to follow. If you've never been to this event, it is absolutely wonderful. I see someone who's been to that event. Would also like to invite you to my church, New Harvest Baptist Church. We're having an Easter service starting at 10:30. Music and a nice message. And so again, I hope everyone has a very nice Easter. Thank you.
Just want everybody to know that coming up in April, April 22, is Earth Day. And so to be part of that in our community on April the 20th, Saturday, April the 20th, we're going to have our Tire Amnesty Day down at the Walker County Landfield. And so there'll be more information put out in our social media and advertisement to promote that the residents of Walker County can bring up to 16 passenger tires to that event free of charge. So they need to be cleaned out of any debris, you know, dirt, rock, gravel, water, those type of things. They can't be mounted on a wheel. They can't be any larger than a light truck tires. So it's passenger and light truck tires. But, you know, typically it's arranged from about $5 to $10 per tire to dispose of those tires if you take them in any other time to dispose of those. This is a grant that we've obtained from Georgia EPD for a program that they have for tire amnesty. And so we will allow any citizen that wants to come on Saturday, April the 20th. I think we're starting about 8:30 and going to, what was it? Eight o'clock, excuse me, eight o'clock, going to about 1 o'clock or so. And you can bring up to 16 tires and dispose of those at no charge.
Are you going to be helping do the loading?
Yes, I do every year.
I'm making sure I come bring them.
Did not part where we are with the city of Rossville, a bit of drop-off site too.
Yes, he has in the past, yes.
Yeah. So city of Rossville, a bit of drop-off.
Drop-off, okay. So we'll get that in the publication information too. Okay, great. Very good.
I need to make one correction. I said that the chipping was free. It was a $10.
Oh, yes.
It was $10 for the chipping, which is very reasonable, but I just remembered it cost me 10 bucks. It was my wife's dog.
Yeah, that was a great event.
It was.
The shelter staff did very well doing that. It was, like I say, 157 dogs and cats. And then there was 38 certificates given away for free spade or neuter for animals, people that needed that. So it's a great, great program. All right, at this time, I don't think we have any need for an executive session, do we? No, we think, okay.
I will add that. The microchip is very important because dealing with animal control in the city, if the county comes out to assist me, they have a scanner with them. And if they can scan it and we see who it belongs to, we'll return it home. But if we take it to the shelter, there is a fee that comes along with it. So it saves you money in the long run.
Good point. Good information. Okay, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, sir. A motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Sir.
We have a second by Commissioner Blake Moore. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned. Thank you all. Appreciate everybody coming out tonight.